I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can I have a roll call, please?
Ken Nelson.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
Charles Lad.
Here.
Mary Scott. Absent Virginia Higley.
Here.
Frances Limo. Absent John Petronella.
Here.
Dane Thoroughgood. Absent Vinnie Grillo.
Here.
And Richard Suzak is here.
Okay. And at this time, I'd like to sit the alternates for the absent members. Commissioner Petronella and Commissioner Grillo. And can I get an approval of the minutes of May 14th, 2020?
I move to approve the minutes.
Second, Charlie Lad.
Motion's made and seconded. Is there any questions, comments, or concerns?
Uh, yes.
Go ahead, Commissioner Lad.
On page 10, the second line should read shed and fencing, not shed and fending.
Okay.
Do you guys see what, you see where that is, Jen? Can't hear you.
Jen, your mute.
Uh, yep, we got it.
Okay, we got it.
Thank you.
Is that it? Is that it, Charlie? Anybody else? Nobody's hands are up. Uh, okay, uh, all in favor, we'll do a show of hands. Opposed, if you're opposed, just say you're opposed. It's unanimous, the minutes are approved. Do we have any bond releases this evening?
Uh, no bond releases.
And moving on to continued public hearings, public hearing 2974. Anybody here for the applicant?
Uh, no, the applicant requested to be continued because they cannot get the plans that the commission had requested.
Okay. So do we need a motion for a continuance, or?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, can I get a motion to continue public hearing 2974 to the next regular meeting?
So moved.
Motion's made.
The next regular meeting is June 11th, 2020.
Second.
Second.
Okay, motions made and seconded. Um, all in favor, show of hands.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Okay, moving on, new public hearings, public hearing 2973, 55 Cottage Road.
Ken Nelson.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
Charles Lad.
Yeah.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
John Petronella.
Here.
Vinnie Grillo.
Here.
And Richard Suzak is here.
Okay, is there anyone here for public hearing 2973, Mr. Daigle?
Yes, I'm here, Randy Daigle.
Okay, is anybody else here? Okay, um, now, I, I know we've had some conversations, um, I've had some conversations with staff. Is there anything you want to start with, Lori?
Well, I think there's enough, um, not controversy, but there's so many different things wrong with this application. It's not necessarily wrong, but we need to kind of wrap our heads around it, so we need to all meet on Monday. Like rather us discuss it outside of the, the meeting rather than, you know, with the applicants, rather than have all of the commissioners involved. Um, so we can just try to kind of wrap our heads around the features that need to be done.
Okay. Um, I see later on on the agenda, we have the, um, the flood plain and the applicants on for that also.
That's an application to be received.
One more time.
That's an application to be received.
Okay, application to be received, okay. So, um, at this point, you're recommending a extension?
I would recommend that we just table this until the next meeting, and then I, I know that the applicant is considering going for a zoning board of appeals for a variance or, uh, coverage, so. I'm sorry, Jen, you just pumped up, so.
When does zoning ZBA meet? Will it be before the next meeting?
Um, the next zoning board of appeals meeting is, I believe, June 22nd.
So it's not before the next meeting?
No.
They only meet once a month?
They do, they do meet once a month. Um, I could ask if they wanted to have a special meeting. Um, I haven't looked at the timelines for posting yet, though. Um, if we didn't move it up. I know that there's enough time to post it, uh, if they hold the, the meeting, their regular meeting.
Okay.
May I ask a question, or?
Absolutely.
Um, I'm not even clear why I have to go to appeals if I haven't, if nothing's been rejected yet, so I don't. I was told I, I shouldn't go there, but I don't even know why. I mean, every time I, I fill out one form and pay the money and upload a bunch of documents, then I have to upload another. I'm, I'm uploading like eight different documents and I'm paying close to $500 already. And now I'm gonna have to go to a zoning board of appeals when I haven't ever been denied, so why, I don't understand that process.
Well, I, uh, this is Lori Whitten calling, talking, um, yeah, I'm not muted, okay. Um, so it's just that, um, as we've reviewed the application, there's been more and more issues that we have determined. So we would rather make sure that the application is complete and thorough before the commission actually reviews it.
We understand that. We're scheduled to meet next week, but I don't know why I have to apply for the PZ appeal. That's, that's my, that's what I'm not sure on.
Because I believe that we discovered that with the addition that is already there and the proposed addition that you would like to have, you are non-conforming to the overall, uh, coverage. So that's why, that's why we wanted to just kind of meet with you, make sure that we're all on the same page. So maybe you don't have to go, we, maybe we recalculate things, maybe we've got a different size that, than you've proposed. So we just need to, to make sure that everything is, is kind of up and, and proper before, you know, start having a conversation and say, well, why is it this and why is it that when we haven't really vetted it from staff level?
No, I fully understand and agree with you on that, absolutely.
So.
Yeah.
Lori, if ZBA were to reject him, does he get all his money back from planning and zoning?
Only with council approval.
What's that?
Um, only with council approval. It's the only way we have the ability to refund money.
Right, but the money shouldn't have been collected if he had to go to ZBA. Why did we collect money for planning and zoning if that is the, if that is the road that he has to take, ZBA first? Well, I mean, that'd be like paying for a building permit right now before he has any of this. And then he gets denied, um, ZBA, and he don't get his money back for his building permit if, if he was told he had to pay that?
So, so when we first received the application, it was not quite complete, and we were finding things as we were reviewing it. So that's why we want to make sure that you're on the right page, he's on the right page.
Okay, um, is the applicant, go ahead, Lori.
Sorry, if we need to return the funds, we, we can go to the, the council and request it, but that is the only avenue that we have legally to do that.
Right. All right, and, uh, is there a way you can reach out to, um, uh, the chairman on ZBA and see if they'll call a special meeting?
Yeah, we can reach out.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I, I mean, it's just, this has been going on and it sounds like, you know, uh, miscommunication on everybody's side, so I'd like to try to, you know, wrap this up for the applicant for or against, whichever way it goes, but sooner than later.
You know, from what I heard is, I heard that, you know, that there's really not been a determination that they actually have to go. They're still in the process of reviewing the applications such that, you know, they can actually make a decision whether it conforms or doesn't conform. So in reality, it might be possible that they might not even have to go to ZBA. Um, you know, so, you know, I think that, you know, I, I think that they, they should meet, definitely meet next week. Go through the issues that might exist and then make a determination as to, you know, the extent of the issues and the, the order of magnitude of possible differences in, you know, what the zoning regulations are and what the proposed, you know, construction is, and then make a determination as to whether they should go, so. Um, before we put the court before the cart, we should do some analysis, and I think that that's what everybody, they would like to do. And then obviously, if, if it turns out that they do have to go to ZBA, that, you know, possibly they can call especially for that. But until they make that determination, we should probably not, you know, force him into ZBA before he even knows if he's not conforming or conforming.
Right, okay, well, again, I, I agree with everything you just said, Commissioner Suzak, but it would have been good if that was done before.
I, I agree too.
Okay, um, so, um, Mr. Daigle, do you have any problem tabling this till our next meeting?
Nope, absolutely not. Uh, like I said, we have a, we have a, we have a meeting scheduled for Monday, and I agree with everything Laura said and Jen and Rich and yourself and everybody else, let's, let's try to find, um, exactly what procedures are, so it is what it is, so.
So I'm gonna look for a motion to table it till the next meeting, because if, like Commissioner Suzak said, if you don't have to go to ZBA, you'd be on our next agenda instead of us having to repost everything again, so.
Yep, I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Does that work, Lori?
Yes, sir.
Okay, can I get a motion to table till next meeting, which is 6:11:20?
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion that we, um, table public hearing 2973 to our next meeting on June 11th, 2020.
Second.
Second.
Linda DeGray.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor, show of hands.
Aye. I can't see my hand, but I say aye.
Okay, and anybody else who's here for that public hearing, we will open the public hearing up at that time. Um, and you will have your opportunity to speak for or against and any, uh, concerns you may have with this application. Okay.
Thank you, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair.
Hold on, I, Lauren and Bill, um, I saw your hand was up. It, we really, I can't really open the public hearing at this time, because we.
That's, that, that, that's fine, but, uh, it, you know, again, there was a bunch of information that was included in this package just recently, as of yesterday, and I had some questions. I will send stuff off to the planning and zoning for their review, so that you have it. You won't have it for your Monday meeting, uh, but, uh, there's, uh, there's, there's still some outstanding concerns that haven't been brought, I brought them up earlier, uh, in some information that was sent to you, and, uh.
Okay, okay, because we're not in a public hearing, I understand what you're saying, and it sounds like the table of the tabling of this works for your benefit also to get the information that you need, so. Um, at this point, um, we will move on to old business. And I don't see any.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Could we, Jen, could you please mute everyone, because all I'm getting is a lot of background noise from people, not that they're doing anything bad, but that would be great, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, no old business, Jen?
Uh, no, uh, no, nope.
Nope, okay, new, new business, uh, 8-24 referrals.
Yeah, hi, Mr. Chairman, Lori Whitten here. So last week, um, the town council made a decision that they would like to acquire probably by lease to perhaps own 800 Enfield Street. This is, uh, the Santander Bu- building, the bank building that is just north of the town hall. Actually, um, Ken, just north of your offices, I believe. And, um, what they would like to do for now is use the drive-through for, um, non-contactless permitting. So dog licenses, taxes, uh, dropping things off, dropping things, you know, or, or collecting things. Um, ultimately, this was also thought to be part of the Higgins Park. So at this point, we would just like to, uh, get a, a referral from the planning and zoning commission to, um, at least allow the town council to move forward with the acquisition of the property most likely leased to own.
Okay, commissioners, any questions? Uh, Commissioner Lad.
Yes, uh, I understand the town has been really tight for money on things lately. Where are they gonna get the money to buy this thing? It's almost a million dollars.
Um, uh, well, we're not purchasing it, we're going to lease it, and I, I, I am not privy to the amount, so I'm, I'm not.
Well, I'm just going by the estimate on the papers you gave us.
Excellent.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry.
So this was something that we were in the long-range plan, thinking of purchasing anyway, so we were just trying to lease it. I, they're working out the lease conditions as we speak, um, but they would like to live up as soon as possible to help the public.
Um.
All right, I'm just curious.
Commissioner, hold on, let, Commissioner Lad, are you all set?
I'm finished, I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Higley.
Thank you. Um, I'm confused. Can we ask questions, or is this just an 824 where we vote to refer it? Because I do have questions, I just don't know that they're appropriate at this time, so. Can somebody give me a little guidance?
So, so at this time, this is just a, a request for a 24 referral, so they have the right to seek, um, to, to have the proper lease to own signed.
Okay, and there's no.
What, what questions do you have? Because the next item is actually the site plan review, so.
Okay, um, I had a couple of questions. I had, um, I noticed that there's 19 parking spaces at the building. And, uh, the most that you probably could get out of it is 10 parking spaces, 19. Anyway, that, forget that. Um, my thing is, my concern is, I, I go along with Commissioner Lad, but my concern is, we're taking it off the tax rules, and we have empty buildings now. You could put it over at the annex and it's right near Public Works. Uh, you could put it over on Taylor Road, that whole empty school, so. Um, I, I understand the long-range plan, I just have an issue with, uh, as, as we, we all know, there's no money to do anything, so, you know, we're supposed to be, um, economizing, and, um, that's just the, the observations I had.
Okay, um, I, I unfortunately cannot speak to the, the, the financing. Um, I will say that, um, there are 40 spaces at the site along with the drive-through, and, um, the, the accessibility of it is actually such that we can walk across the parking lot and drop things off and pick things as staff. So that was, that was the idea.
Ah, well, thank you, Lori, I just have issues with it, but that's just me.
You?
Thank you, you answered my questions.
Okay.
Lori.
Thank you, Ken.
You're welcome. And Lori, an 8-24, that's more of a courtesy from the council, isn't it? I mean, they could move forward whether we vote against it or not, if I'm correct.
Uh, you know, 8-24, 8-24 is a statutory requirement that the planning commission so, uh, reviews something before the, um, town council or the governing body purchases a property, sells a property, um, improves a property. So, um, I, I believe, yes, if you gave a negative one, they've probably still had the right to move forward. It probably wouldn't look good and probably people would not be happy, but, um, you know, that I believe realistically and, and that it can happen. I mean, just, just like, um, you could approve a zoning permit, e- even though the wetlands commission denied it, you still have the right to approve a zoning permit, that doesn't mean it's going to happen.
Right.
But this is basically, you know, does this meet the plan of conservation and development? Does it meet the, the, um, the idea of, you know, the new park in the long run? Um, this actually, you know, ties into the gym where we, you know, the, where we are leasing that and going to improve that as well, and, and, um, so that's kind of where we're at. It's, it, it was one of those things where it was like, wow, this would work out really well for the community. Why don't we see if we could do this?
What gym are we leasing?
So the one at the.
Old Denazin.
Yeah, the old level.
Oh, yeah, 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 yes, yes, yes.
It hasn't been renovated yet.
Yeah, I, I understand, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Commissioners, any other questions?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we put a positive, um, 824 to the town council that we believe that in the long run, it will benefit the town and the community and, um, generally have an impact on the, I guess, the people going to the town, um, I, I, our, our town center without having to have personal contact with somebody, so.
Is there a second?
I'll second Charlie Lad.
Okay, motion's made and seconded. Okay, uh, I will take a roll call on this, Commissioner Suzak, please.
Ken Nelson.
Four.
Linda DeGray.
Four.
Charles Lad.
Four.
Virginia Higley.
Commissioner Higley.
Oh, I said four, I didn't, I, did you hear me?
No.
I'm sorry.
John Petronella.
Okay.
Four.
Vinnie Grillo.
Four.
And Richard Suzak is four.
Okay, all of, all in favor, none opposed? That's all set, okay. Next on the agenda, um, uh, XSP 2007.
Yep, again, hi, um, oh, sorry, you gonna read that in?
No, uh, Commissioner Suzak.
Um, Ken Nelson.
Here.
Uh, Linda DeGray.
There.
Charles Lad.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
John Petronella. Vinnie Grillo.
Here.
And Richard Suzak is here.
Okay. Anybody from the town?
Yep, Mr. Chairman, this is Lori Whitten again.
Yep.
Um, this is the, actually, site plan application for 800 Enfield Street, um, under the BG zone in order to have, um, a government building. It is a site plan review, not a special permit. And so this is just a request to, to convert the former bank to a government office building. So, but there is the drive-through issue. Um, we only allow drive-throughs for, uh, financial institutions and basically, um, takeout meals. So, um, I do have an application, um, for our next meeting to allow the drive-through for government buildings as well. So that is the only difference. But we, we, we wanted to move forward with this so we could at least, um, start updating the building and bringing desks in and making sure that there's handicapped accessible built, uh, uh, bathrooms and things of that nature. Questions?
You don't consider that, you don't consider the town a financial institution?
We actually did debate that, because for the most part, we are looking to do this for taxes. Um, if you want to consider it a financial institution, by all means, we could make that determination, but I think it's safer. If you want to do that, we could do that, but I think it's safer to just change the regulations. But we did debate whether or not we were a financial institution.
Well, we, we do, we do loans. We foreclose on delinquent taxes, we collect sewer bills and everything else, I mean, I think we cover all the aspects of a financial institution.
Yeah. I, I don't think it was fully the intent, but I think it was more the intent that, that for banks, per se, but we do, you're right, we do loans. We collect taxes, we have bills, we collect bills, we we give all sorts of things. I'm sorry, I've got a delay and I thought you were talking, so.
No, no, you're good. I mean, I don't know how the commissioners feel about that. But I mean, open-ended government buildings getting drive-through windows. Um, like, uh, Commissioner Higley said earlier, we got a lot of buildings that are empty right now, which are government buildings, and when they transfer, are they still entitled to that drive-through because it's existing?
I, I believe that the use is existing as long as it's permitted. So, so that this drive-through use exists, let's say another bank went in, the special permit's already been issued. The problem is, is that we don't have anything, per se, allowing government buildings to have the drive-through. So if we were, were to change the regulations to allow that, or if you decide that this is considered a financial institution, it's just a change of use.
Commissioners, your input?
Um.
Sounds like a complaint.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Suzak.
Well, I, I tend to agree, I think that, you know, we, we, you know, it, although the town is a financial institution, I think that in the definition of, you know, the drive-throughs that, that are permitted, um, under section 12, it would be nice to have a little more clarity that, you know, it can't be misconstrued that, you know, we're doing something that, that's not necessarily totally transparent, and we're trying to, like, fit something into something that might not necessarily always work. So that's, I think that, it, it, you know, I think that we should do the, um, the regulation, you know, change to refer to the town as being able to do that.
Okay, Commissioner DeGray.
Um, I, I'm, I have a little bit of a concern, because this is a, a different circumstance that we're looking at. But to make any government building have a drive-through, I can understand this particular one, but I, I do have an issue just to make any government building have a drive-through. So I, I would have to see the wording and then how we would apply it. I, because right now, we're under different circumstances than before. But this too shall pass, and then everything will go back to a, a normal, and I'm thinking we keep making all of these new rules for this exception that we're going through right now, I have a concern over. That's what I have to say, if I'm making sense. I'm thinking that this is a, a two-year period that they're talking about. After that, you know, I'm sure something else will come along, but. But again, to use this exception as the rule, I, you know, well, because of this, bec- you know, because of this virus, we should do it for this other building. I have an issue. I don't have an issue with this particular eight hundred Enfield Street being a drive-through because it's already there, but you do apply that to any government building, any, is, I do have issues, so. Okay.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Suzak, do you want to speak again?
Yes, in, in, in terms of, you know, I, I think that, you know, the intent to, to add that, you know, obviously if they would have to come before us in terms of we wouldn't just randomly put drive-throughs for just any particular use, there would have to be a specific use why we would approve it so that, you know, I, I think that the convenience that this is going to bring and that there's a lot of people who, you know, would pay their taxes a lot sooner or they want to pay them, you know, with a check or cash or, or something, and they can't do that unless they go into the town hall. And, and sometimes it's, it's just simpler for them to actually just, you know, come into, you know, a, a drive-through area and, um, expedite their payments so that it, it would be a lot quicker and simpler rather than having to, you know, you know, get out of your car, go up the stairs, go into the office if somebody's ahead of you, then you, you know, you have to wait there and then, you know. So I, I think in that sense, it, everything would get reviewed. It's not a, a carte blanche, you know, fact that every single government, you know, facility is going to have a drive-through. I think it's going to be on, on a as-needed and as-per-use, you know, situation so that it's not just carte blanche that, you know, all of a sudden every single building is going to get a drive-through. So I, you know, I think that, you know, it, we will be reviewing it and, you know, those that don't necessarily meet the, the litmus test that we would have would not get one of those drive-throughs.
I, I agree with everything you said right off in the beginning, Commissioner Suzak. My concern is the Health District, and I'm just using them as an example, they're a government entity. So if we put this regulation through, would they even have to come to us to put a drive-through in? Because it's in the regulations?
Mr. Chairman, Lori Whitten here. So, so right now, we allow the drive-through facilities for financial institutions by special permit. So th- this would be no different. It would still need a special permit.
Okay, okay.
For our government building, offices and facilities. That's the only thing we're, we're just adding that wording, but it would still be a special permit. However, since this was already a special permit and, and previously approved as such, it would just be a, 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 a reuse.
Yep.
For the government building.
Okay. Commissioner Lad.
I was just wondering if we couldn't specify that was for a tax use only on the approval. That would limit other government buildings being involved.
But, uh, Lori Whitten here again, so that, that would defeat all of the other permitting processes that we were going to be trying to utilize dog licenses and, and possibly even.
Well.
View permit.
You know, tax collector uses.
Right, so that would limit the use of the drive-through entirely.
Hmm, okay. I'm just trying to find a way to cover our CIA's or CYA's here.
I, I, it's not that it's a special permit for any new, um, drive-through. I think that that covers you. It, it, it's explicitly stated in the regulations currently. The only thing is instead of financial institutions, we're just adding, adding government buildings.
How do we call this? A government financial institution?
All set, Commissioner Lad?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah. Commissioner Suzak, did you want to talk again?
Yeah, I, I just want to add one more thing in terms of, you know, I, I listened to the news of, of, you know, that, like the food shelf and, 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 you know, the distribution of food, how people, you know, drive, you know, into, through a parking lot to get, you know, a, a bag of food. And potentially, you know, if, if the situation ever arose again, you know, that it could be used for something like that too, where, you know, you could, you know, have some place that you could, you know, safely, you know, have a transaction without necessarily having a lot of contact with the other person, regardless of, you know, whether it's, you know, dog, um, tags or, you know, a food bag or, you know, potentially paying your bills. I think that, you know, it, there's, there is some benefit for it and, you know, it, it, and you never know what, you know, ultimately, you know, is going to arise in the future. But again, I think it is a special permit. It's not that they, they have the right to do it. We have to approve them to have that right to do it. So I think that that's, you know, the, the, the thing that, 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 you know, I, I think, you know, we, we control the cards in terms of if we don't think it's a good fit for what, what they're proposing, then we would say it's not really a good fit.
I, I agree with you. Um, anyone else, commissioners?
Nope.
Nope, okay. Um, how do you guys want to move forward?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve, um, the, the resolution for, um, site plan review. Let me get it right, XSP R twenty oh seven, you know, as prepared by our, um, planning department dated, um, May twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty, um, with the ten conditions indicated with no special site conditions.
Second.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Um, I just have one comment. Uh, Commissioner Suzak, you had said XSP R. I don't have an R on mine.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm just reading from my, my memorandum and, and I'm not in, you know, and, and it is dated May twenty-seventh versus today's date is the twenty-eighth. So I'm not sure if this memorandum is the, the latest, um, reference that we have or not.
It is, um, it's pretty much the same thing. Um, the X in front of the SP, which normally is an SPR, is just means exempt because the town is exempt from fees.
Right. Okay. All right.
The, the R was a typo.
Okay.
All right. Can I withdraw my R?
There, I, I just, because next meeting it'll be on the minute, so. Okay, motion's made and seconded. Questions, comments or concerns? Uh, roll call, please.
Um, Ken Nelson.
Four.
Linda DeGray.
Four.
Charles Lad.
Four.
Virginia Higley.
Four.
John Petronella.
Four.
Vinnie Grillo.
Four.
And Richard Suzak is four.
Okay, all of, all in favor, none against? Uh, moving on. What's that?
By the way, the name of the, uh, by the way, the name of this will be the Enfield Express.
Do they serve french fries?
Don't we have a bus called that already?
Okay, moving on, other business. Um, uh, general discussion of regulations and procedures. Have any updates? I saw the emails that we got today, Lori, or yesterday.
Yes, so we have put everything out. The RFQs and RFPs are out. They are supposed to be in by June ninth. Um, so far I've gotten a couple of calls, a couple of questions. Um, so people are looking at them. Um, I think they're pretty intrigued. So hopefully we will, uh, be moving forward with this quickly. So I tentatively, uh, scheduled interviews with consultants on the June sixteenth or seventeenth. We'll have the opening on June ninth. I've asked for ten copies of the proposals so we could distribute to however many we want to, um, have on the interview panel.
Okay, um, are Commissioner Lad and Suzak going to be present at the opening and interviews?
Uh, so the opening, because this is actually done like it is an opening for contractors. They actually do a little opening. They like stand there and they open and say, you know, so-and-so firm is proposing goods for so much money. Uh, but nobody is necessarily there and it's probably going to be done virtually. So it's just a matter of that's what it is. I don't think, I don't even think I'm going to be there, but I might be. Um, so, but afterwards, what we can do is distribute the, um, the proposals and, uh, we'll need to narrow it down so we could do interviews and, and, uh, figure out how many people you actually want on that panel.
But, right, well, that's why I was saying Commissioner Lad and Suzak, um, I mean, if they wanted to be part of the narrowing down, um, you know, it's up to them. I, I don't know what role they want to play, but I know Commissioner Lad was asking about it before the meeting started.
Yep. And what about you, Mr. Chairman?
What about what?
What about you, Mr. Chairman? Or do you want to be part of that process?
No, I mean, we put Commissioner Lad and Suzak, I mean, they can report back to us when they have, you know, something more definitive of, you know, where we're, who we're going to go with. And, uh.
Okay. So I think we'll probably have staff do, do some reviews and Commissioner Lad and Suzak, and then we'll narrow it down and report back and try to, uh, do our interviews.
Okay. Charlie, you good with that?
I'm good with that.
Rich?
I'm good with that.
Okay, great. Okay, uh, next, correspondence.
Um, I don't have much for you. Uh, the outdoor dining cabos are getting approved. I'm sure Rick can tell you all about that. Um, our new assistant town planner started today, or yesterday, actually. Um, so she's getting up to speed and we're just, we're really busy trying to keep things rolling.
Great. Lori, anything?
Um, no, I was going to bring up the same things. Um, you know, uh, her name Savannah Nicole Vialba, and she seems very smart and fun and nice, and I think she's going to be a great fit. So we're excited to have her onboard.
Great. Okay, uh, commissioners' correspondence. Commissioner DeGray.
I just want to thank, uh, the town for doing a really good job getting these restaurants open. I did have concerns about the ten-day period there, but I am hearing that some of these restaurants are getting approved within one day, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Uh, the staff has been working hard on that and, uh, that was always our goal is that the statute said that we could take ten, not that we would want to. So. But thanks, I'll pass that along.
Commissioner Suzak.
Because I, I just want to make a note that, you know, the Economic Development Commission has made a challenge of a number of boards that are in town and for fundraising for the community garden. And, you know, I, I guess it's, it's trying to, you know, get enough money so that they can purchase some of the materials that they're looking to purchase. And what they're doing is they're pitting, you know, the different commissions against each other to see who has the most dedicated or, or which commission has the most funds, let's put it that way. Disposable cash or whatever you want to call it. And, you know, I, you know, obviously I'm a member of the Economic Development Commission and planning and zoning, but I think I'm leaning towards planning and zoning for, you know, fundraising and, and would allocate some funds toward, towards that. And what I'd like to do is sort of encourage, you know, the other commissioner members possibly to, um, donate a little bit of, you know, money so that, you know, we can get this community garden, you know, fund, you know, at, at least active and, and, you know, bring it to fruition as to what they're looking to achieve.
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is Lori Whitten. Um, I think they also, it's not necessarily I, that, uh, the commissioners should be donating. I think that their, the idea may have been to even really just have the commissioners reach out to their friends and family and whatnot and say, hey, you, you need to donate money and just say that it's, you know, the PCC ends donating that. So there's no prize, it's just pride.
Yeah, and realistically, you don't even have to give any money. The, I, I just wanted to sort of, you know, put it out there that, you know, that the challenge has been, you know, made and, you know, we, we need to at least address it.
Uh, well noted, Commissioner Suzak, and I did get the emails. And when it came in front of us, I thought it was a great idea. Um, I think the original boxes were a huge success and it gives people the opportunity to do something that they wouldn't be able to do otherwise. So because I was so for it, I, right now, will make a pledge of a hundred dollars myself if I can get other commissioners, because they're looking for five hundred dollars a board. So, you know, I'll make the big jump right now if you guys will step up a little and, you know, let's, I, I'm willing to put my money where my mouth is on this because I think it's a great cause. And, you know, that's why I had asked about if people couldn't afford, you know, the box, how do we go about donating? So I'll make my donation right now. And then just Lori, um, just send an email tomorrow or whatever, an application, however, we have to go about to make the donation. And, um, hopefully some other commissioners on other boards and stuff will step up also. It's a great thing for the town.
Ken, this is Jenny Higley. I saw it on email and I'd already contributed. I thought it was a very good cause as well. I didn't contribute a hundred dollars, but I contributed. So I think it's great that you're able to do that.
Doesn't matter.
I know, I know.
Yep. Absolutely.
And it's matching, it's matching funds, Ken, so.
Absolutely, yep.
Your hundred dollars is matched, so it's really two hundred dollars you're giving.
Can I use that on my taxes? Can I use the hundred on my taxes?
T V says, yep.
Commissioner DeGray.
Okay, you're, you're talking about this and we're going to get the emails, but we want more people to be involved. Uh, Lori, if you could kind of say, uh, an address and how people could address their envelope so that the money from the public that watches ETV could also contribute, that would be a good thing. I don't know if you have that information right now, but, uh, I will be contributing. But to have that information out there for those that are watching on YouTube would be a great thing.
I believe, I believe it's going to developmentservices.org or Enfield Development Services. Oops, sorry, was I muted then?
No.
But we can, uh, it, it's, it's on the website. Um, it's, it's, it's under Community Gardens. It's under, it's been on Facebook, it's been, um, on the P C, uh, the EDC site now. So, um, I will get everybody the email and addresses to development services.
If it, if it, if it does go on ETV and any other advertisement for it, just have them put planning and zoning in the memo so we get credit for the donations.
Got it.
I actually just put on the application so everybody, they don't even know that they're donating it for planning and zoning. They'll just do it automatically.
Well, through planning and zoning. Yep. Okay. Um, anything else, Lori, or commissioners? Nothing? Commissioner Petronella, you're all set?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, under town planner report, I just, you know, aside from the community gardens, we also are working on the farmer's market, which will be opening on Sunday mornings from ten to one, starting in July, so that's pretty cool too.
Good. I think it's getting bigger and bigger every year.
Well, it's going to be on Sunday, so that's a big change. As opposed to Wednesday afternoons.
Yep, yep, more people should be able to attend. Great. All set, Lori?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, administrative approvals?
Nothing, uh, nothing to report there. Um, just all of the, uh, outdoor dining stuff that Rick's been working on.
So can we, Jen, and I don't know if you have this, do you have a list of the restaurants that have been approved for outdoor dining with you?
Um, I can pull up the email I sent the other day. Actually, I, I can, I can pull up the key drive on here, hold on.
I just want, I, I just like you to read it off, um, so people watching realize. I just want, I, I just like you to read it off, um, so people watching realize that these restaurants are back open and help them any way I can, or we can, because they've been shut down for so long.
Right. Um, and I believe the um, uh, Nelson Teresa from Community Development is trying to get something on a new, uh, Economic Development, uh, Facebook page posted so that people know which restaurants are open and which ones are pending. Um, but right now we have Chicago Sam's is approved. Uh, Bonavita's approved. Uh, Pizza Palace, I believe, is approved. Uh, Rick? Yes. Um, Figaro's is, uh, approved, and actually they're looking for, uh, an expansion, I believe. Um, Country Diner. Yep, they're, they're expanding, Rick, right?
They, they were approved for an expansion on what they originally, uh, applied for.
All right. Um, we have the Country Diner was approved. Yard House Tavern was approved, Serape's was approved. Um, 99 Restaurant, Rick, that was approved, right?
Correct.
Uh, Berry Twist on Enfield Street, was that approved?
No, that's, that's still pending.
All right. Um, and Hot Table?
Hot Table was approved.
And TGI Fridays.
That was approved, but they're, uh, holding off on, uh, on their plans right now.
And what are you seeing for a backlog, Rick? Or Jen? Is there one?
No, not really. We're, we're getting, uh, comments back on a fairly quick basis from, uh, health, building and fire departments. Uh, everybody's pitching in to, uh, try to get the comments back as soon as possible. And, uh, you know, if there's any help on any of the, uh, diagrams or requirements that we're asking, uh, everybody's pitching in to try to move it along fairly quickly.
Great, great. Um, commissioners, anybody else? Rich? You're hands up? You're muted?
Yeah, muted. Cause, cause I, I guess, you know, one question I have in terms of, you know, there's, there's some relatively small businesses that, you know, are, you know, like a one-room, um, you know, restaurant or deli or something. And, and, and I, and how does that work for them in terms of, you know, if they just put out one table in front of their, um, deli or, or, you know, their store or whatever it is, do they have to go through that application process or, or are they just sort of, you know, grandfathering the fact that, okay, you, you know, nobody can come in my store, but as long as I have this table out here, I could sort of at least, you know, sell something so that somebody can actually sit down. So, you know, how formal or, or how big of, you know, of a, you know, I can see some of the larger restaurants where that would work, but, you know, some of these really, really tiny restaurants that are, you know, just starting out and just getting started. You know, do they
Talking about the one on Pearl Street?
Excuse me?
Are you talking about the one on Pearl Street?
No, there's actually one on, um, you know, Route 190 that I, I, I do walking in at night and, and I walk by this one little store. And, and it's encouraging the fact that, you know, he's, he actually put out some, you know, two tables or something. And I'm a little looking at and saying, wow, you know, that, that's pretty neat that he did that. But then all of a sudden I know that he's a very, very small, you know, outfit and, you know, whether, you know, we, we need to like chase these guys down and say, oh, you know, you're breaking the law, you can't do this, when in reality, they're just trying to scrape him to get by. Where, you know, they're, they're just, you know, anything that they can do to, to increase, you know, the revenue or any kind of traffic that they have in their, their area is, is obviously great, greatly approved, you know, appreciated so that, you know, I don't think that we should necessarily, you know, punish people depending, you know, on their size and, and whether, you know, they, they actually even know they have to, you know, apply for something just because, well, the governor obviously said, hey, you have to do this. But there are some people who just, you know, don't necessarily, you know, understand the fact that, you know, there's a whole sequence of events that always occurs.
Well, no matter what the size is, we'll make every effort to get an approval. We're not, we're not denying, uh, or making an effort to, to stop people from applying. If they're unaware of it, that's why we're trying to put out as much information as possible. And, and we won't, aren't doing it in a negative way. We're trying to do it in a positive way to get any restaurants that, that want to or need to have the open, uh, or outdoor seating and dining available to the public. Um, you know, so we're, we're trying to move everything along as, as quick as possible, no matter what the size, large or small. And unfortunately, not unfortunately, I guess I shouldn't say that, but the executive order, no matter what the size is, the executive order requires that uh, there'd be an approval process. So no matter what it may be, one table or, or 20 tables, would still have to go through the process.
So, okay. Well, again, you know, I think that, you know, we should encourage all businesses to do that and, um, you know, and again, I, I forgot exactly where I saw that store, so I'm not saying anything.
So, uh, our, our business assistance officers is, are going to go out only if need be. And it's not going to be, you know, going out and finding people or anything like that. It's just perhaps maybe you can move your tables, you know, two feet further apart. And, you know, if you haven't gotten a permit, you really should. We're not going out and hammering anybody. We're really just trying to go out and help and make sure that everybody is safe. And, and we just want to help. We don't want to hinder anybody.
So somebody like Dairy Queen or Collins Creamery, who's had picnic tables out forever. I, I mean, are they already approved for outside dining? Are they exempt?
Go ahead. You, you and Rick, I can't tell. I don't have visual.
Okay, so the, the only thing that comes into real play there is the, the social distancing and, and requirements under the health department. Um, we're, we're trying to kind of rely on, on people with common, in common sense that they um, make whatever effort they can to socially distance themselves from one another so there isn't any real issues. Some places were already approved for outside, uh, like you said, picnic tables and such, and there's really not much of a problem. Nobody's really going out there and, and uh, as Lori said, looking to damper the, uh, the movement on any of this whatsoever.
Right, great. And then I had one question too, along with this, um, and this is questions for the commission. Due to the fact that these businesses have been shut down for two, three months, what, how would you guys feel that if we added, since the executive order is only temporary, we added, um, them to be able to do some sort of an open banner or something? To, um, let the people know that they're open again?
I'm for it. You know that. This is Linda.
Yep, a- and this would just be strictly temporary until the executive order is lifted.
Um, Ken, I think that's a great idea. We do have something, a banner for openings, grand opening, so in a sense, this is an opening because they haven't done it in the past. And the grand opening one is temporary anyway, but it's long enough so that it would serve their needs.
Right.
Oh, this is kidding, I'm sorry.
I, I don't want to go and, you know, have to go through a whole permitting process or anything like that if they, you know, so.
Well.
Commissioners?
I think that
Commissioner Suzak? Oh.
Again, I'm, I'm definitely for that. I think that's a great idea in terms of, you know, I think that we should do anything that's, you know, possible, even, even well, we, we shouldn't have those guys who waved their hands all over the place, you know, but, but, you know, maybe allow them to put one of those little guys up there to say, hey, you know, welcome, come on in, and as long as it's sort of, you know, points to, to a direction towards, you know, their, their business. So I think that's a great idea.
Uh, and yeah, and I think Rick, Rick knows a little more, he deals with banners a little more than I do, but I believe there is a provision, as Jenny had said, for open signs. Or open, or grand opening, or now open. Yep.
That, that's correct. And, and if you notice, some of the restaurants have a lot of signs up, uh, anyways, that we haven't been, uh, normally we would, uh, take some sort of action, but in, in these times, we're trying to, uh, let them promote themselves as much as possible.
That, that's basically all I was leaning towards, Rick, is, you know, I don't want to do no formal anything, but just if we don't enforce it, help them the way we can. And, you know, be a partner with them. I mean, things aren't good for a lot of people and outside dining's a start, but you know, let them know that we're trying. And, you know, if, if, um, you guys get anything in the office from these businesses, recommendations, you know, feel free to reach out to us and, you know, run it by us and maybe we can work with them and because I don't run a restaurant, so I don't know their needs. Um, and we'll go from there.
Lori here. Um, so the, I believe the executive order allows them to put up pretty much signs. Like, I don't even think there's much of a limit, if I recall, and it's been a while since I've read it, but, um, I, I would suggest that maybe we just put out a PSA or something like that and just say, you know, if you want to put out an open banner, you know, just we'll maybe make a maximum size and just let them do it. They don't have to apply for anything. Just let them do it, something like that.
Yeah, even if, you know, like maybe a simple phone call to the ones that were approved, because I know I did get questions from some businesses about it. Call them and then on the newer, the new ones that we approved, just put it right on their approval, you know, that as long as this is happening, they have a right to do it or whatever, without any town enforcement.
Good.
All right.
It's lovely.
Commissioner, you guys are all good with it?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, good. Um, no other administrative approvals, Jen?
No.
No, okay, great. Applications to be received.
Um, so far, just the two listed on the agenda. I just recent, I just updated that yesterday, so.
So, uh, actually, excuse me, Jen, um, so, um, I think I failed to, um, add the XZA 20-06, which is actually the um, text amendment that I discussed earlier to modify, um, section 5.20 to under government buildings and offices facilities add to footnote number 12, so they could have the drive-through.
Okay.
So this is the third application that, that I should have added.
Okay. Um, that's that. Uh, opportunities on resolved issues. I saw your email, Lori. Did you get any response back?
Uh, not yet. So Deb said that she's gonna, um, look to see how they were divided in the first place, and that might answer the question. If not, then we'll move forward from there. But they're starting to take more information from, from, other than, um, emergency stuff, so I think that uh, we're, we're coming out of, out of the muck, the COVID muck.
Good. Okay. Uh, I think that's it. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Hold on, I got hands up all over the place. Commissioner Lad?
I see Mark McCauley there. Is there something we need to help him with, or?
I was going to call him next, and then there's somebody after that. Okay. Is that all you needed, Charlie?
That's all I needed.
Okay, Mark?
Yes, I'm not sure when I was supposed to chime in, but I'm looking for sponsorship to do a text amendment to outdoor seating in an industrial zone.
On a permanent basis or just for the
On a permanent basis.
Okay. Um, have you spoke with Lori or Jen about this?
Uh, yeah, we've met, um, and have drafted something to, um, we put the text amendment.
Um, I, I, I know that, uh, Rick had mentioned that earlier today, and we had taken um, in something in the office, I believe it was passed on to Raquel before she left. Um, if you could forward it directly to me, your, uh, um, proposal again, and we will definitely move forward.
Okay, sounds good.
Yep.
Okay, can we, can we try to get that on the next agenda? Jen?
Um, it would be
Go on, Lori.
That, that would be a public hearing process, so, uh, for a text amendment, so we wouldn't be, have time to do that for the next meeting. I mean, if, if it was actually a text amendment. But probably the following meeting. We still need the 15 days before.
Right, I just think it got lost in the shuffle when Raquel left, so I'd like to try to move this forward for them. I, I haven't, I haven't seen anything about it, but the sooner we get it, I think it'd be better for everybody. If possible.
Agreed.
Yep.
All set, Mark?
Yes, thank you very much.
Get, get them that tomorrow morning and, you know, they'll get working on it, and we'll try to get you on the agenda ASAP.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, Lorraine and Bill?
Yeah, uh, this is Bill Creedon. I just had one question on this, uh, I, I know you're just accepting an application for this flood uh, permit, but does that
We can't discuss anything that is on our agenda at this time until the meeting
I'm not asking to discuss it, I just have a question.
But you're discussing it. You're, we can't, we can't, and I apologize, Bill, but the regulation is very clear. Anything on our agenda, we as commissioners cannot discuss without the applicant and everybody present. It's not fair to you. If he was speaking about you, it's not fair to him if you're speaking. And the questions, we don't, we don't have answers to the questions, so you need to
Procedure question. It's, it's a procedure
I would ask you to contact staff tomorrow morning, just so we don't violate any of the rules. That's all. I'm trying to be very cautious here, Bill.
Fine, fine, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Yeah, just call staff tomorrow morning. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Anybody else? Okay, motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn. This is Linda.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor? Show of hands.
Aye, here's my hand, aye.
Motion's made and passes unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Stay healthy, and I will see you in two weeks.
Thank you.
Thanks for the chairman. Bye bye.
Don't forget to send in, don't forget to send in those donations. Vinnie?